Isn't that it?
Well, you can use that one.
Yeah.
This is very slow. Technology Operations Manager.
Technology Operations Manager. So, I'm adding additional responsibilities that, uh, will be, that are necessary, um, in order to manage all of that. And then, a creation of a position that we, uh, it's a, a variety of different, um, responsibilities that are related to either data management or managing information systems. It's really kind of a, more of a desk job, um, where somebody, for example, um, would certainly help make sure the information systems are all synchronized, that the data's clean, that the state reports are done. Um, they would be managing all of that type of, uh, of work. But in addition to that, when employees are hired, um, you know, they have to be, uh, entered into the system. Um, teachers need to be, um, connected to the students in the classroom, and rosters have to be made, and schedules have to be made, and they would make sure that all of that happens. Um, in addition, if their name, their new member of our staff, their name ought to go on the website, um, they should have email accounts, they should have all of that. And so, this position would be, really be responsible for taking care of that, um, all of those types of functions. And this would allow the director to provide the services, um, that we need him to provide in the management part. And then, the third position, um, would be really a technician, you know, what you would call an I T technician, and they would be, uh, the person that, um, would be running around like a chicken, providing services in the buildings. Uh, Jason would do, uh, a certain amount of that, um, and your, uh, data specialist, uh, slash, uh, administrator, technology support person would also be responsible for some help desk support, so that as they're out and about doing things, if there's some kind of a crisis, that there's somebody to actually contact that can track people down and, or coordinate, or can provide support services over the phone. So, that's the concept of, of this piece, and we just felt that, uh, it accomplishes several goals. You know, one of mine is to make sure that, uh, people are, especially our faculty, are, are spending the majority of their time, uh, in front of kids. And, um, right now, there's evidence, um, uh, in my observations, um, that suggests that perhaps they're not including people like Amy. And this was not, you know, I, this is not like a blame thing. This is, this is what happens when you have chronic turnover of staff. Tasset knowledge in the organization is lost. Forty percent of the knowledge, uh, that an employee has when they leave is lost, and then you have to onboard the new person and allow them to have time to get familiar with, um, you know, your workflows, your culture, your climate, you know, where's the bathrooms, all of that, who's on first, who's on second, all of that. Um, and so, when you're losing people at the rate with which New Market has lost people, it is inevitable that you're going to find yourself in this situation. Oftentimes, people who really, really care about, uh, the work and the kid and the community and the schools, they'll just pick up pieces, especially veterans. You know, they'll see a ball's going to get dropped, and instead of saying anything, they just pick it up, and pretty soon, nobody knows what all these veterans are running around picking up.
Until they're gone.
Until they're gone. And so, the longer person is here, the more tacit knowledge is lost when they leave. And, um, and so, what will inevitably happen is that, um, you'll be going along thinking you've covered all the bases, and then all of a sudden, you'll see something crop up, and you'll say, oh, my gosh, there's a fire going on over there. You know, what's that about? You know? And then you'll, you'll say, okay, well, we have to attend to that issue. And you attend to the issue, maybe you think you're short-staffed, or, 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 you know, uh, whatever the solution is. And really, what happens is that you're putting a patch on something, that there's this, this undercurrent, um, of, of kind of fire going on in your boiler room, per se, and it's coming up through these, in these different ways. And, um, and over time, when you patch this, and then the fire comes up over here, and you patch that, then pretty soon you wind up in a situation that's, you know, of confusion. And I think, you know, one of the themes that I've seen and have heard from almost everybody is that there's this, like, communication challenge in the district, but yet, when I ask people, you know, what, what do you mean when you say that? Because communication can mean so many different things. Um, there's, there's different examples given. So, even what we're saying, when, when I'm hearing about we have a communication challenge, it's not, doesn't mean the same thing to the same people. And part of it, um, I think this experience that people are having, is born out of this blurriness that has occurred, because it's not only blurriness in terms of those roles and responsibilities, but it becomes workflow blurry. Who do you call for this? And, and when it, when you can't think, you know, well, that's probably the natural person you would call, or if that position's no longer existing, um, then it becomes confusing. And you might have to then call five people before you get something done, and that could be a communication challenge, right? So, I, and I don't think that's the only thing, but I think these types of things contribute to the experience that people are having. So, um, so, I would like to recommend that, um, we kind of, you know, and I would like to, kind of put a stake in the ground and just say, I, you know, and I'm not saying that this is, this is a complete restructuring, or this is all we need. I'm just saying that I think we can, we can look at at least these three positions, put them in place, and, um, introduce a little bit more support staff, uh, administrative support in the guidance area, and I think we will be in, uh, much better shape next year. The other part of this, uh, proposal, and I just want to be clear, is that I'm saying that this is the plan, but this doesn't mean that, um, we don't need training in order to make sure that, that this works out, you know, for, for our better good. Um, and so, we're going to need some transitional support, and one of the areas that we're going to need that, with the only other I T person on staff right now, uh, permanent leaving us, um, in the middle of this building project, um, that I'm recommending, uh, that we move our summer, um, help up to forty hours from thirty hours. So, that's one of the things we'll do, um, and recommend. Um, in addition to that, we'll need, uh, ongoing support from Amy over the course, I'm going to guess, for the year. You know, I'm not saying full-time. She has a full-time job, but she has agreed to provide us with some support as, as we bridge, you know, ourselves from, or wean ourselves off of her, I guess, maybe might be a better way to, to say that without kind of losing, you know, a lot of the tacit knowledge that, that, that she has. She's been here twenty-three years. That's, that's a long time. So, um, and, and then we would have to rely on some vendors also for some support, especially in the area of, uh, Student Information System, which is Infinite Campus here, and also, uh, the website. It needs some, some, um, it needs some attention. I'll just say, say it that way. And, um, Chris Cooney is the one that is the webmaster right now. So, uh, with him leaving and him being webmaster, then, you know, we're going to need to have some training, uh, because he's leaving, I think, in another week. That's my understanding.
Yes.
Yeah. So, that, that is, um, the plan. I was hoping tonight that I would be able to take a little bit of time and work at the business office, um, to give you kind of, uh, you know, a little accounting of, of the money piece, but I unfortunately am working full-time, uh, still in, in my current district, and I wasn't able to, uh, peel myself a way to do that. But what I can say is that, um, the way that, um, uh, this proposal was structured, that, um, I believe it would be pretty cost-neutral. You know, some of it's going to depend, uh, a little bit, not, not in any significant way, um, in terms of being cost-neutral, on, on the candidate profiles that we receive. So, what I've provided you in the job description is a range. Um, I've also provided you with information on, um, salary comps for, uh, positions in the I T area that are fairly current, um, and are specific to New Hampshire. So, um, so that you could, you know, have a sense too of what the broader range is in, in our state, and, um, it would provide context for the ranges that I've provided. As, as you probably see in the job description, some of these, you know, merge pieces of some of these different, these four roles into others. So, I tried to, you know, kind of adjust the ranges for, for our, um, organization based on how we've kind of re, re-allocated those functions. So, that's my report for you, and I'm certainly happy and would welcome any questions you might have.
So, it's cost-neutral in terms of green dollars?
Yes.
But it sounds like, um, stress-relieving in terms of roles, and perhaps, well, more beneficial in terms of getting stuff done where, where it needs to get done.
I think by hiring, yes. I think by being able to post these positions, uh, with the qualifications that I've outlined here, that will get the skill set that would match to the work, and I think that we will all benefit greatly from, from that.
Can I, can I try to sugar this off to the layperson in terms of these three levels? It sounded, because a lot of it seems familiar to what I'm, I've, I've experienced in my own field. It's like the, the technology technician is the person, we have a service desk. You type in, geez, I've got the wheel of death on my computer, it's not doing anything. They come up five minutes later and fix it. That's that person?
Um, to a, yes. That person would be the boots-on-the-ground person, yes.
Okay. And then the middle is, is the person who may, um, we're going to Windows version X Y Z or whatever, for example. They're in charge of the, of the installation.
Yes.
And then the, um, the, the director is in charge of str- long-term strategic visioning.
Yes.
And sort of managing every, all those two underneath.
Yes, yes. He will also still remain your primary, um, network administrator, so I just want to be clear about that. Um, but there'll be more budgetary responsibilities and, you know, many warranties. We're going to have all new buildings, and managing that is really important. Also, you know, keeping inventories and making sure that if something fails.
Yeah.
Dot U M H.
Yeah.
Dot U S. Warren.
Good evening. It's June twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. Calling to order the, this meeting of the New Market School Board will begin with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the first item on the agenda, can I have a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to R S A ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman two, um, B?
So moved.
Second.
Elizabeth, uh, for us and Al, second, um, roll call vote. Mr. Zink.
Aye.
Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
Ms. McKinney.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we are in non-public.
Warren.
All right. Um, we are back on in public session. The first, uh, well, first of all, is there any public comment? Joanne.
Hi, Joanne Lazar's here tonight, speaking on behalf of N T A, the New Market, or N E A now, New Market Education Association. Um, on the agenda today is talking about the data manager position and shuffling things around. Um, we just wanted to point out that the current data manager position is a certified teacher position, and we're proposing that it be returned to a true teaching job. Um, it could be either an enrichment teaching position, which was cut many years ago, or perhaps a certified math instructor for the elementary. We haven't had, uh, any luck in hiring math tutors for over a year now for our elementary school, so it'd be great to see that teaching position put back in where it could do the most good with direct instruction with the children. That's our plug. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Joanne, wasn't even the math guy that used to come all the time?
Um, my half-term.
Yes.
Okay, next up is the, um, are we going to discuss the data specialist position, which was just mentioned? Susan.
Yes, um, so I had sent off a packet and.
May I introduce Dr. Gibbons? Is the public not have seen her yet on camera?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this is, for the public, this is Dr. Susan Gibbons. We're happy to have you onboard, and, um, she, Dr. Gibbons has prepared some materials for us tonight. Everybody's seen them, I think, on, um, proposed, uh, um, a data specialist position. And floor is yours.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I provided you with some background information. First of all, I'll say that the data manager position, um, was posted twice, and we did not get any, uh, applicants that had any qualifications, um, after two attempts. So, uh, that is one of the things that made me, um, you know, think that perhaps maybe we ought to look at things a little bit differently. Um, I have been visiting the schools and having conversations with the teachers and students and administration. Meredith and I have had an opportunity to, to meet quite a few times and, um, have talked about, uh, the various needs that we have. And, um, so, one of the things that I've observed, and I apologize, I have a tremendous amount of Novocain in my mouth, so it's really hard to talk. I just got out of having a little bit of oral surgery, so, so forgive me if I'm slurring. It's because, uh, I can't move part of my face, so. Do you want to say that for the viewing audience?
They should have email accounts, they should have all of that, and so this position would be, really be responsible for taking care of that, all of those types of functions. And this would allow the director to provide the services that we need him to provide in the management part. And then the third position would be really a technician, you know, what you would call an IT technician. And they would be the person that would be running around like a chicken, providing services in the buildings. Jason would do a certain amount of that. And your data specialist slash administrator, technology support person would also be responsible for some help desk support. So that as they're out and about doing things, if there's some kind of a crisis, that there's somebody to actually contact that can track people down and or coordinate or can provide support services over the phone. So that's the concept of this piece, and we just felt that it accomplishes several goals. You know, one of mine is to make sure that people are, especially our faculty, are spending the majority of their time in front of kids. And right now, there's evidence in my observations that suggests that perhaps they're not including people like Amy. And this was not, you know, this is not like a blame thing. This is, this is what happens when you have chronic turnover of staff. Tasset knowledge in the organization is lost. Forty percent of the knowledge that an employee has when they leave is lost. And then you have to onboard the new person and allow them to have time to get familiar with, you know, your workflows, your culture, your climate, you know, where's the bathrooms, all of that? Who's on first, who's on second, all of that. And so when you're losing people at the rate with which New Market has lost people, it is inevitable that you're going to find yourself in this situation. Oftentimes, people who really, really care about the work and the kid and the community and the schools, they'll just pick up pieces, especially veterans. You know, they'll see a ball's going to get dropped, and instead of saying anything, they just pick it up. And pretty soon, nobody knows what all these veterans are running around picking up.
Until they're gone.
Until they're gone. And so the longer person is here, the more tacit knowledge is lost when they leave. And, and so what will inevitably happen is that you'll be going along thinking you've covered all the bases, and then all of a sudden, you'll see something crop up. And you'll say, oh, my gosh, there's a fire going on over there. You know, what's that about? You know, and then you'll, you'll say, okay, well, we have to attend to that issue. And you attend to the issue, maybe you think you're short-staffed, or, 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 you know, whatever the solution is. And really, what happens is that you're putting a patch on something, that there's this, this undercurrent of, of kind of fire going on in your boiler room, per se. And it's coming up through these, in these different ways. And, and over time, when you patch this, and then the fire comes up over here, and you patch that, then pretty soon, you wind up in a situation that's, you know, of confusion. And I think, you know, one of the themes that I've seen and have heard from almost everybody is that there's this, like, communication challenge in the district. But yet, when I ask people, you know, what, what do you mean when you say that? Because communication can mean so many different things. There's, there's different examples given. So even what we're saying, when, when I'm hearing about we have a communication challenge, it's not, doesn't mean the same thing to the same people. And part of it, I think this experience that people are having, is born out of this blurriness that has occurred. Because it's not only blurriness in terms of those roles and responsibilities, but it becomes workflow blurry. Who do you call for this? And, and when it, when you can't think, you know, well, that's probably the natural person you would call, or if that position's no longer existing, then it becomes confusing. And you might have to then call five people before you get something done. And that could be a communication challenge, right? So, and I don't think that's the only thing, but I think these types of things contribute to the experience that people are having. So, so I would like to recommend that we kind of, you know, and I would like to, kind of put a stake in the ground and just say, you know, and I'm not saying that this is, this is a complete restructuring, or this is all we need. I'm just saying that I think we can, we can look at at least these three positions, put them in place, and introduce a little bit more support staff, administrative support in the guidance area. And I think we will be in much better shape next year. The other part of this proposal, and I just want to be clear, is that I'm saying that this is the plan. But this doesn't mean that we don't need training in order to make sure that, that this works out, you know, for, for our better good. And so we're going to need some transitional support. And one of the areas that we're going to need that, with the only other IT person on staff right now, permanent leaving us in the middle of this building project, that I'm recommending that we move our summer help up to forty hours from thirty hours. So that's one of the things we'll do and recommend. In addition to that, we'll need ongoing support from Amy over the course, I'm going to guess, for the year. You know, I'm not saying full-time, she has a full-time job, but she has agreed to provide us with some support as, as we bridge, you know, ourselves from, or wean ourselves off of her, I guess. Maybe it might be a better way to, to say that without kind of losing, you know, a lot of the tacit knowledge that, that she has. She's been here twenty-three years, that's, that's a long time, so. And, and then we would have to rely on some vendors also for some support, especially in the area of Student Information System, which is Infinite Campus here, and also the website. It needs some, some, it needs some attention, I'll just say, say it that way. And Chris Cooney is the one that is the webmaster right now. So with him leaving and him being webmaster, then, you know, we're going to need to have some training, because he's leaving, I think, in another week, that's my understanding. Yeah, so that, that is the plan. I was hoping tonight that I would be able to take a little bit of time and work at the business office to give you kind of, you know, a little accounting of, of the money piece. But I unfortunately am working full-time still in, in my current district, and I wasn't able to peel myself away to do that. But what I can say is that the way that this proposal was structured, that I believe it would be pretty cost-neutral. You know, some of it's going to depend a little bit, not, not in any significant way, in terms of being cost-neutral, on, on the candidate profiles that we receive. So what I've provided you in the job description is a range. I've also provided you with information on salary comps for positions in the IT area that are fairly current and are specific to New Hampshire. So, so that you could, you know, have a sense, too, of what the broader range is in, in our state. And it would provide context for the ranges that I've provided. As, as you probably see in the job description, some of these, you know, merge pieces of some of these different, these four roles into others. So I tried to, you know, kind of adjust the ranges for, for our organization based on how we've kind of re-allocated those functions. So that's my report for you, and I'm certainly happy and would welcome any questions you might have.
So it's cost-neutral in terms of green dollars? But it sounds like stress-relieving in terms of roles, and perhaps, well, more beneficial in terms of getting stuff done where, where it needs to get done.
I think by hiring, yes, I think by being able to post these positions with the qualifications that I've outlined here, that will get the skill set that would match to the work. And I think that we will all benefit greatly from, from that.
Can I, can I try to sugar this off to the layperson in terms of these three levels? It sounded, because a lot of it seems familiar to what I'm, I've experienced in my own field. It's like the, the technology technician is the person, we have a service desk. You type in, geez, I've got the Wheel of Death on my computer, it's not doing anything. They come up five minutes later and fix it, that's that person?
To a, yes, that person would be the boots-on-the-ground person, yes.
Okay, and then the middle is, is the person who may, we're going to Windows version XYZ or whatever. For example, they're in charge of the, of the installation.
Yes.
And then the, the director is in charge of long-term strategic visioning, and sort of managing every, all those two underneath.
Yes, yes. He will also still remain your primary network administrator, so I just want to be clear about that. But there'll be more budgetary responsibilities and, you know, many warranties. We're going to have all new buildings, and managing that is really important. Also, you know, keeping inventories and making sure that if something fails, and we have inventories, if we don't get on top of that right now, then it makes it really hard to hold vendors accountable if, if you have a failure.
Right.
So it's, it's making sure that we have all those pieces in place so that we're ready to, you know, kind of embrace this lovely building, buildings that you have.
Just had one last comment, just, you know, thank you to you and Meredith for working on this and presenting it in sort of short, a short timeframe.
So there's one thing, oh, sorry, one thing I wanted to say is, you know, I very much appreciate the thoroughness of this report and that you and Meredith have worked on it together to move us forward. My only concern, and I don't want to get into the operational weeds on anything, is, you know, if we spend these dollars now, what do we do if the fire comes up on another thing six months from now? You know, obviously, having that, and that's where I'm going to defer to you to help us have that visionary leadership, so that we are doing things in a strategic fashion and not continuing to put out, to put out the fires.
Well, this is kind of my first attempt to put at least, you know, let's, let's get this one right while we have the opportunity to do so. It's, it's easier to do something like this when the positions are open, you know?
And when there's, they're not ready, when you can't find a ready fill-in, which may not have been the right decision anyway, it forces you to have to look at something in a different way.
Exactly, so I always say that challenge brings opportunity and opportunity brings challenge. And so this is just really looking at a challenge that, that we're faced with and, and trying to make the best, best out of it that we can.
I'm, I'm very pleased. I, in my excellent as an HR guy, one of the approaches we used to take and worked very well is called the white paper approach, without regard to who's there, without regard to availability of candidates to find the job. And I like the fact that we've done that. So as candidates come forward that need and don't need these requirements, we'll know that we're, we're deviating for some, some particular reason. In other words, you go through an educational experience or experiential thing, and the candidate comes up that has neither the experience nor the education we need to talk about. And that's what I like so much about this approach. And it's not designed for blah blah Mary who's already here. And we kind of mold their abilities and experience to that. This is a white paper that says this is, this is what the jobs are going to be, and if we compromise, at least we're telling. So I really think this approach, as we go forward, is terrific. Thank you.
Anything else? May I have a motion to approve the reorganization proposed for IT guidance and the data manager function in the associated job descriptions as presented in this report?
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, can I just make one more comment? Because I, I just want to respond to Joanne's plea. And, and just to say that this is an attempt to be able to provide more support, direct support to students and to relieve teachers from having to do tasks that, take them away from time on learning or timeless students, so.
You can say it again, Patrick.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, on to the manifest. Elizabeth, do you want to?
Nope. I seek to, seek a motion to approve, oh, see, I did it again, my, sorry. I move that we approve the manifest, total manifest of three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and six cents.
So moved. Check it.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I haven't signed those, but I will. So the next item is authorizing incoming superintendent to hire professional staff during the summer, which relates to what we talked about a little bit just now. And we did that, I think, for Meredith earlier on.
Every summer.
Yeah, and, and so that's what we're doing here. If there's no discussion, can I have a motion for that as well?
So moved, second.
Any, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm still thawing out from the field trip today. The next item is the, Greg, that's why you're here, the, the roof and the solar tubes. Can you approach and explain that to the board? Some of us were at the building committee.
Sure. First, I do want to make a quick mention. Our new superintendent is using boiler rooms and fires, so as a facility guy, can we choose different fire boiling rooms? Just doesn't feel comfortable to me. So, anyway, so one of the things that we had as an add-alternate to our project was creating natural light into the new cafeteria. The new cafeteria, which is not built yet, is where the stage and music area is. It does not have any outside windows, nor gain any outside light at all. So one of the alternates was to originally put in skylights. Structurally, the facility was not really capable of handling that without some major changes. So one of the ideas is to come up with solar tubes, which are basically a way to reflect the sunlight into the facility, creating that natural light without having the same structural impacts that we would have. As we go through, gone through this particular process of looking at, we also recognize that in this particular area, we have seven existing penetrations for equipment that is being removed. Those penetrations are only being capped off as part of the scope of the project. And if, we discussed this a quarter while ago, a lot of our roofs are asbestos-contained, and a lot of them are roofs on top of roofs, which creates some significant challenges when we're trying to find leaks and other things. So one of the thought, one of the issues is we're dealing with a roof that has a older roof below, a two thousand and nine roof above that, seven penetrations with the potential of six more penetrations for solar tubes. So one of the things that we really need to look at is replacing the roof if we're going to do the solar tubes. This was brought to the building committee and discussed about what the plan would be. The building committee supported the installation of the solar tubes as well as replacing the roof, which then creates the ability for us to have proper insulation, get rid of the seven penetrations, put the proper penetrations in for the solar tubes, as well as creating a twenty-year warranty rubber roof, thus protecting a brand-new space, which is right below it, from future problems. The cost for this particular project is, is at two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars. I am recommending that we move forward with this utilizing funds from the construction project, since the penetrations, the solar tubes were all as part of the construction project. And we do have the funding available within the construction project to cover this particular part of the project, or this particular item within the project. So I'm looking for approval to move forward engaging Ekman Construction in getting a new roof with solar tubes for that particular area.
Now, Greg, is it coming from the contingencies?
It ultimately comes from, out of the contingencies. It, the contingency right now is, is approximately a half a million dollars un, I'd say unbooked. We have other areas in contingencies, such as we carry about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in projected change orders or other scopes that we don't know which we'll find. We also have additional money in contingencies for additional asbestos that may be found that's outside of the scope. We also have money in, in that same area for unsuitable materials, materials that are not good for us to build on or construct parking lots and so, and so forth. So that number is really more in the eight hundred thousand dollar range.
Because some has been earmarked for other things.
Correct. And if, and on top of that, it doesn't include the fact that we also have taken impact fees and placed those. And why that doesn't show there is because that actually went to offset a payment to our contractor. So the money's sitting in the line item for the construction, but it doesn't show up as a contingency line, because we've actually expended money in that line item or reduced the amount of money that we will expend in that line at the end of the project. And then we have still some infrastructure monies that are coming in, and as well as rebates and things like that that are, that are going to help decrease. And if you remember, we still have the interest money that is sitting out there. It will be over a half a million. That is, can be used with both approval for additional projects at the schools, as well as we have additional impact fees that are also going to be coming available. And I believe that's around fifty thousand, I'm looking at Meredith.
Available now, you have fifty thousand.
Yeah, available now, so we do have some other funding that's coming in.
Great, okay, just a few questions. First of all, just to note, I, I support this, this project, as I said, in the building committee the other night. Just a few questions occurred to me. I was reading Mr. Barudy's minutes from the construction meetings, and he, he asked the question of whether this, there were actually ACMs in that first layer roof. And, and do we have a memo to that effect, do we know that?
We do know that, we have, he was looking at the older roof reports that, that I created. And at that time of the roof report that he was looking at, it showed testing. So it was in progress to be tested at that time. We do have the results, the results are all recorded for that, and the report has been updated. Essentially, there's only, other than the brand, brand-new roofs that we just put on as part of the construction, the gymnasium roof, and believe it or not, our oldest building do not have asbestos-containing material.
This one definitely does, though.
This one definitely does.
The whole thing?
A, a majority of the roofs up there have asbestos.
Okay, and that's factored into the price then, because that's, that's an added?
Correct. If you went back to my original roof report, you'll see that at that time, I didn't have the asbestos figures, because I didn't know if it was, I didn't have the results at that point. So this represents an increase because we have to deal with asbestos materials.
Second, second question is, was, are these figures based on numbers that were put out to bid or will be?
These numbers are based on submissions from the contractors that are currently working for Ekman on the construction. So Academy Roofing is doing the roofing project for the schools under the construction job.
Does, so this, this, this hasn't been bid out?
It, no, it is not a, an RFP that's put out on the street for bidding. Part, part of the problem, or I shouldn't say really a problem, one of the issues is we have a very tiny window to get this done in the timeframe that we need to be able to. So that kind of creates a problem. The other part to this is it is also under Ekman's purview as part of the construction job. So it's not really our project, if I was having ourself go out and bid a roof and have a roof replacement, this is really inside of their construction. Thus, you see the two and a half construction, two and a half percent construction fee, because they manage that cost.
Yeah, this, this kind of gets to my next question in terms of, in terms of financing. I mean, the, the lion's share of this is, is for the roof itself.
Correct.
You know, which would be, if it was on a regular schedule for replacement, would be an operational
Correct.
type, you know, of, of expense, so. Although I agree with the project, and, and, you know, because, you know, we're short on time doesn't mean we can forego a bidding process necessarily. I'm not entirely comfortable around that right now.
It would be difficult to bid, I would say, given the circumstances. You have work that's happening in that area anyway, and you would be adding yet another vendor into that mix. I'm not sure how you would approach that. And the scale-up to do that and the coordination is going to be much more difficult.
I wouldn't be able to have an RFP out on the street for four weeks. Because we got, I got to do all the design and specifications and then put it out to the bid. And then it has to be published for at least minimum two weeks.
And I think on, on top of that, I believe we asked the question, can we afford a minute hour operating budget? And I think the answer was no, is that correct?
That is correct right now. Other than there are capital reserve funds, I believe that number is, I'm looking, Meredith, I think it's two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars approximately.
At least so, but a hundred and sixty-seven of that is committed through your CIP to dealing with another roof replacement.
Correct.
What I was going to offer is that, and a concern that I would have is that if we bid it out and we wound up with a different contractor, that sometimes it, it creates a challenge. Because when you try to hold somebody accountable, if you have problems when it comes time for warranty, and you're dealing with multiple contractors, then it's really difficult. Because where you have the construction team that's out there now, if they're prepping all of, all of the other parts, and you have another contractor that comes in and then adds the roof piece, then you sometimes get this pointing the finger at, if you hadn't prepared the roof in this way, this way, if you keep it all under your base contract with this contractor, you will always and forever be able to hold them accountable for it. So for that reason alone, I, I would.
And I think the other question, and who is a facilities guy in Ekman, is it a reasonable expense? Actually, the number that they gave here, if I take my original projection without the asbestos and then I add in my cost factors that I know for asbestos, we're right at the numbers that I was looking at.
So maybe what I'm really getting at is that we do have a policy for bidding, which we can waive for a good reason, which is what I'm hearing, so.
I'd be very concerned if we put this out to bid, let's say, a month down the road, because if we prove the solar tubes, they're going to already be installed. The roof's going to be already capped, so now you're going to uninstall your solar tubes also, and then have a contractor come in.
Someone else come in and take care of your roof and put them back in.
So for all, for all the?
I think, I think, it's, that's a good, good approach.
I mean, that's, that's really, I guess, what I'm getting at. So, I mean, all of this makes sense in terms of a waiver, and maybe we incorporate that into?
No, I think it makes sense practically as well. You know, one, there is a lack of natural light in that situation. We're supposed to have performances in there, this will enhance that, as well as Greg's point of protecting our investment on the inside of the building. If we have a, a roof that's questionable, we're risking it. And so I think that in that regard, it makes sense.
These thirty inches that we finally found out?
Correct.
And there's six of them. There's six thirty-inch solar tubes. Which were in the design, so my question was, was that adequate? And the answer was, that's what was spent.
That is correct.
We're not going to wish we had put in eight.
No.
Keep in mind, these are not over the stage itself, it's in the.
You don't want to open it yet.
Right.
You do not want to lose it.
No.
And, and so I, I lost part of that conversation about, about operational, does insufficient operational?
We have another work that we do have to do that is not part of the construction. The nineteen twenty-five building or the original building's roof is, is tired and needs to be replaced. And so in that capital, one, either two hundred and eighty-five thousand, about a hundred and seventy odd thousand dollars for replacement of that roof.
And will this all get done at the same time, then?
No, no. I, I, I will not be able to coordinate that roof. And that one, I would, I would be putting out to a competitive bid process. But there's so much going on this summer, there's just no way we'd want to even try to attempt to get that done. And we can certainly make it survive another year, do it next, uh, next summer, in school sports.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm seeking a, a motion for approval of the roofing solar tube project and waiver of the school board's bidding policy for all the reasons discussed here tonight.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Greg, thank you for being on topic. That was, I think that's going to make a huge difference in that building. You're welcome.
Okay, so next is resignation, so we head on.
Yes, we received a letter of resignation from a high school Spanish teacher, Joanna House. Seek a motion to accept. So moved. A second.
Any discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, I think we have two nominations.
Correct. I have a nomination for Andrew Pollak, serves kindergarten teacher. Andrew comes to us with thirteen years of experience at the primary level, lives in Florida and New Hampshire, and holds a master's degree in reading. The second nominee is Silas Richards for High School Social Studies. And Silas, for a one-year leave of absence, has also held a master's degree and recently completed that program at U of M.
So moved that we accept the nominations, that Meredith just, just.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anything further? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone.